My voice is loud.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you here to the, I was, I almost was going to say the fifth annual, but we've done them all in one year, so I guess it is an annual, but to our fifth Farm Street Inn dinner. Once again, I want to embarrass Mr. Batano, as I do each time, and he keeps telling me not to do it, and thank him and Connie and Joan, I know have worked very hard as members of the committee with Paul to pull this together, and I appreciate it. I thank you all for your efforts. I welcome each of you here this evening, and because you really don't want to listen to me speak, but you really want to see the program that's going to be presented, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lee, who in fact will then proceed to introduce the program. Was that good, Judy, or what?
Thank you, Bill. It's my pleasure this evening to sort of open the program and put a, put a focus on what our discussion will be tonight. It'll be a discussion that will be no speeches. We're talking about technology this evening, and the input of technology into the teaching, learning process. I think when, as I look around the room, for, for most of us, when we went to school, our country was pretty much an industrial manufacturing country, and we've moved from that to a technical information-delivering services kind of a country, which means that you no longer send a student to school and teach him simple tasks to go out in the job market in order to make a living, but rather the task now, in, in whatever field of endeavor you go into, require the understanding of some type of technology. And if you have children, you know they're the only ones that can program a VCR. That's because this is, this is their era, and it's, it's foreign to us. We have to, we have to learn it, and they're, they're growing with it. And if you watch them play the, I have two boys, and they, they play golf with technology, and I swear, they would rather play golf with the gadgets on the TV than go out on the golf course, and that just amazes me. But that's the, the era that we're in, and we, as a school department, we have to keep up with that. We have to be able to provide our students with the kinds of skills that they're going to need when they leave school, whether they leave school and go to work, or if they leave school and go on to further education. A knowledge of technology is going to be not only a, a nice tool to have, it's, it's a, it's something they must have if they hope to be successful. So your students, speaking to the parents, and your students speaking to the principals, and your students speaking to the rest of you from Wakefield, your students in Wakefield are going to have that opportunity. So all I want to say this evening is what Wakefield is doing relative to technology. They will focus that down and end up with a program that is, is, is involved in some of our schools. It's a LaserDisc program, where we're using laser technology and the television to help enrich some of our programs. And the principal of the Greenwood-Mule Schools, Judy DeLucia, was very involved in bringing this technology to Wakefield, meeting with Optical Data Company and their representative, Tom Marconi, who will also give a brief demonstration of what the laser technology can do. If you're, if you're like I am, I didn't know a heck of a lot about it until I had an opportunity to, to see how it's used in a classroom, and is it, is it fluff? No, it's not fluff. It really gets a student to get involved with the learning process, and hopefully they'll explain to you that the, through technology, it's, it's a visual approach to learning. There's an audio component, because the teacher has full control over the technology and can stop and start it and involve the, the students in a discussion, and it's a tactile approach to learning, the touching, the hands-on, because with this total program comes a, a science kit, and I don't know if I'm using the correct technology, but later on Judy and Tom can clarify it, but this allows us to stop the program and have children get involved with materials and to experiment and to try out some of the things they've just seen on the, on the video. So it's a very involved technology. Another element of it will be the language arts section, where we take the science, the windows-to-science curriculum, and we weave it into the other areas of curriculum. We bring it in in building vocabulary, we bring it into our writing program, we bring it into our reading program. There's a, there's a great deal of involvement here in a total educational picture, integrated. And when you, when you bring things together like that, it has more meaning for children, and Judy is going to explain what they're doing in the Greenwood and Yule Schools to bring that integration to being. It isn't only in the Greenwood-Yule Schools, but Judy's the representative. We also have the program in the Franklin School, we have the, in the Montrose School, the Walton School, and the Greenwood School. Those are the four schools we have the technology in right now. Principals of those schools are here this evening, Mr. Burchill, Mr. Boyd, and Mr. Lantin. And we're all going to be here after we enjoy Paul's dinner, so that if you have further questions, if you have any questions, that, that speak to the principals, speak to Judy, speak to Tom, or myself, and I'll direct you to who has the answer. I don't have the answer. Wakefield is keeping up with technology. Just this year alone, we put forty thousand dollars, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars into the, into the high school to bring new computers into each department. We put another ten thousand dollars into our library, to bring our library up to date, where we can, we can start networking with, within our school and with our other libraries. Next year, the school committee already has budgeted fifty thousand dollars to continue to improve our computer program, and we're going to use most of that money to put a new Mac lab up in the high school, desperately needed here in the high school, and that money's earmarked for there and to complete our work at our lab, our lab, our Mac lab at the junior high school. We have labs in the Atwell, in the junior high school, grade seven, junior high school, grade eight, and in most of your elementary schools. We are building towards that. We are using the CD-ROM materials to, to supplement what the computer can do on its own. The CD-ROM is a disc player that can take an entire encyclopedia and, and put it in a classroom on a, on a disk, so students can use it the same way they would if they went to the library, to do research and to find out more information. Some of it's interactive, some of it isn't. The whole world of technology is, is something that, as educators, we're really taking a close focus on, and I think this evening's program should help you understand just one small phase of that, and that is the LaserDisc technology now being used in our schools, and a technology that we are planning to implement in all of the remaining schools at the elementary level for next year. So it's a great deal of pleasure, I introduce the person who brought the technology to Wakefield through a grant and who has a really excellent knowledge of it, Judy DeLucia.
King Chat told you all about it, and we can just have dinner. About that golf chat, you mean those clubs and all those lessons I took, I can just throw them away and go to a computer. Thank you. I'd like to thank Paul for inviting us to share the program. I'm representing the science that's taking place in all the elementary schools, and it just so happens that the Greenwood School does have the disc player, so basically what I'm going to talk about at the Greenwood and Yule Schools is also happening throughout the elementary level across town at all the other schools, and I'm here just to explain what we've been doing with the program, and then, and we're all introducing each other, and introduce Tom, who will actually show you the program and the disc player and how it works. In just eight years, some of the students that we have now in our schools will be graduating from high school as a class of 2000. Whether they choose to pursue a college education, a career, or other endeavors, these individuals are the future leaders of our country for the 21st century. As part of their education, they should have the opportunity to attain essential skills for competing in an increasingly complex technological world, and I think this is something that we've been talking about, I know, at the Greenwood Yule, at our last PTO meeting, we had Karen Callen speak to our parents just about where we are going, and the Greenwood-Yule PTO has been very invested in technology at the elementary schools. We have a computer lab that not only has somebody coming in teaching computer classes, but also has many, many, many parent volunteers keeping that going, and I know that that's happening in the other schools too, so we're really putting a lot of emphasis on technology at the elementary schools. Industrial-age teaching strategies cannot prepare students for the information age. The workplace has shifted from manufacturing and industry to technology and information. As students prepare for their future careers, they need to acquire the advanced skills that employers will expect from them. Even those students who choose careers in traditional manufacturing fields will be asked to perform tasks by thinking creatively, using computerized equipment, and working on teams. One of the things that we've really encountered in, in putting together business school partnerships is that businesses are saying those very things to us all the time. We need to have kids be able to think, we don't, one of the areas that we think needs to be fostered in school, critical thinking, to be able to use the equipment that is out there, and to be able to work cooperatively in groups. We've instituted in this, through this Windows on Science and throughout the curriculum, cooperative learning, teaching strategies, which enhance not only this program, but all of the other areas that we work on in school. As toddlers, our immediate experience of the world is sensory. We see it first, then touch. Eyes popping with delight, we reach out for more of the world around us, and conceptualization begins. As children, we enter school with our natural curiosity intact. We are fascinated by the world and how it works. And I think that that, especially at the Yule School, it's a kindergarten, first-grade school, we see that all the time. A lot of parents come in with their, their little children, and they go and they explore our little things in the, in the carters and, and our little toys that we have, and then by the time the end of kindergarten, they walk in, they stand in line, and they're ready to go, and I think a lot of that curiosity sometimes goes, and, and they come in very idealistic and ready to touch and, and learn many, many things. Today, by the time today's children graduate from high school, something's happened. Their natural sense of curiosity has been dimmed, if not extinguished. As educators, we must keep their flame bright and their curiosity alive. In our society, children are exposed to a huge amount of information on a daily basis. Bombarded by messages from television, radio, and print media, students have become sophisticated information consumers. Unfortunately, we don't take full advantage in the classroom of students' abilities to absorb new information, and we have gone through a lot of training in the past couple of years to get people in the classrooms to begin to find out new ways for children to absorb information. We've had Talents Unlimited, that was put together by Mr. Burchill, and it's for, all elementary teachers in Wakefield are being trained in Talents Unlimited to have challenges in the classroom and integrated right into our curriculum areas, challenges ready for any child who may be ready to meet those challenges. We've trained a lot of people in cooperative learning and new teaching strategies. The rapid growth of scientific knowledge and technology has dramatically altered the definition of what constitutes a basic education. To give students the education they need for personal success in this information age, a new approach to learning is required. The new literacy model, developed by Optical Data, expands the concept of learning to incorporate visual, print, and tactile literacy. It preserves children's natural curiosity and provides them with the skills they need to understand, interpret, and intelligently create connections between images, sounds, and words. And I'm sure as many of you can attest to, if you have seen children on the computer or playing the video games, they are like fish to water with that, much more than we are. When we had people come into the computer lab with the kids, and they didn't know how to turn on the computers or load the programs, we'd just say, "That's all right, the kids will show you, they know how to do it." And, and, and they do know how to do it, and it is natural for them. The role of educators and educational material must be to provide data through which students can satisfy their curiosity. Education further supports students' search for insight and personal meaning in the world around them. The acquired knowledge and experience will then promote the student's ability to act on the basis of their insights. The principles of the new literacy help students solve problems, develop logical arguments, think independently, and understand new technologies. Modern society has moved past the industrial age. Education must adopt a new paradigm to meet the challenges of the information age. We need to redefine the way information is delivered. This includes adopting innovative teaching techniques, equipment, and materials. First, education, teaching strategies, and programs must offer literacy for all children. In particular, at the Greenwood School, we have a lot of classes with special needs students, and we also have a lot of academically talented children, so we go from one gamut to the other, and as most schools do today, and we really need to make sure that we meet the needs of all the children and that all children are literate when they leave school. Second, educational programs must be dynamic. Dynamic programs push back the four walls of the classroom and let in the sights and sounds of the outside world. The third criterion for success is empowering teachers and offering them new opportunities for professional growth. Innovative teaching strategies, dynamic programs, and professional staff development help teachers make the conceptual shift to a new paradigm. The teachers using this program have all been trained by the Optical Data staff. The final criteria is improved student outcomes. Empowered students will be successful. Rapid growth of scientific knowledge and technology has dramatically altered the definition of what constitutes our education. At the Greenwood and Yule Schools, as well as, as all elementary schools in Wakefield, we've instituted many new teaching strategies to meet the national standards in science and math. Personally, I have to be very involved with the math committee, who, we're currently looking at the national standards and adapting our curriculum, and not only are we changing the curriculum within the next year, but we're also trying to change the equipment and the materials that are going to be used to teach math, so that we are meeting the standards, tied in nicely with the math standards of the science standards, and those are the only two areas at present that have national standards. At the Yule School, in kindergarten and first grade, a multi-sensory approach to science is introduced, developing a love for science and a solid foundation for future learning. Some of the curriculum areas that are introduced include five senses, seasons, weather, which is, they, they also integrate the math here, and this comes from a first-grade class. This was actually, they're predicting, they're doing predicting. They take, they've done experiments. I happen to see Muriel Campbell's class going into the storage room, closing the doors, making electricity with balloons, and they showed the electricity, and they went outside and made clouds with their breath, and then she does, has the kids come up and fill in, so she gets sent those on. And also in the first grade at the Yule School, we have become proud parents of about twenty-four chicks last week, and they did predicting. Over on your left, you'll see how they, the kids predicted how many they thought would be yellow, brown, black, and you can go around after and look at these. What would be the heaviest, the predictions, if they put the eggs in oil, if they put them in water, if they put them in vinegar, how many days it took. Then they candled the eggs. They took the eggs and they candled them, they numbered them to see how many they thought actually had chicks in them. That's the candling results, and that's the kids' feelings, day by day, about what it felt like to mother these eggs. And twenty-four of them did hatch, and they went up for adoption on Thursday, and went to a 4H group, and in May comes the ducks, so we'll be, we'll be mothering again. They, building on this foundation and philosophy, the students in grades two to four are not only addressing national standards, but are being challenged through multimedia, cooperative learning, Talents Unlimited, and varied teaching strategies. At the Greenwood School, we happen to be lucky enough to have a science lab. The science lab and the computer lab are kind of combined into one space, and the reason that we do have the science lab is because the video disc player, we have one in the school, and we have up and downstairs, so we put the video disc player in the lab so that all the grades could use it, and the second, third, and fourth grade teachers have coordinated, they've taken some from this program and some from that program, to coordinate the curriculum so that they can use all the different materials, and it just has worked better for us to have it on one floor in one place. The staff has integrated the Windows on Science program into the curriculum, introducing such topics as the ocean, space, animals, weather, human body, dinosaurs, poison safety, and electricity and magnets. Just as an example, the second grade last week was, was doing the human body, and they did some cooperative learning strategies. What the teachers have done is, this, these come from the Ginn reading series that we are currently using in Wakefield. The big books and the storybooks from Ginn follow along with a lot of the concepts that are taught in science, so they have taken, when they're doing a reading lesson, they use the science program for that grade level that goes with the book. So this is from our reading program that's going with the science program. They then followed up with a cooperative learning activity with, with an inclusion program. Each group was given all the parts of the body, and I asked Jan Redden to please put one side together for me in case somebody asks me how it went, and they put the body together, and then they made lungs, so you can combine, labeled all the parts, and that was taken directly from, Peter, do you want to try this? Principal said they would put the body together, and so those are the, some of the second grade things that were done. Third grade has worked a lot on projects, a lot of follow-up with hands-on projects. They did some dentistry, teeth, and space, and fourth grade was working on magnets and electricity, and a lot of that, of these booklets are up here. Coordinating many of the Windows on Science lessons with our reading series has been something that the teachers have really been working toward doing this year. They've gleaned materials from many curriculum areas and focused on coordinated lessons. To be honest with you, we have so many activities going on in a day, it's very hard to have forty-five minutes of science, and forty-five minutes of language, and forty-five minutes of writing, and forty-five minutes of math, so if, the more that we can put the subject areas together, it seems the more that the children are getting out of it. We've engaged many additional materials from NASA, local dentists, health professionals, Museum of Science, chemical companies, and many other places in the local area to enhance the curriculum. One of the things, when I was talking to the teachers, that they really stressed about the Windows on Science program is the, are these language follow-up booklets that come with it. What it does is, they do a lesson, they use the video disc, then they do experiments in cooperative groups or projects, something like what I just showed you, and then they do follow-up activities. In these booklets, and I'm sure Tom, you'll probably go into these a little bit more, but the teachers were really, they said, this is one of the best parts that they found that they've used with it, and I can pass these around. It gives you the concept and the vocabulary, then there's a reading passage, and then they have what they call mapping, and I think probably some of your other dinners that people have, and it, it's a concept map that the kids figure out. In the back, there's activities, which are writing ideas which, which fit right in with the writing process that we use in Wakefield, and the teachers said they use at least two or three of these writing ideas with every concept that's presented with Windows on Science. Questions to think about in the back of each of these booklets has then resulted in cooperative learning and Talents Unlimited teaching strategies being worked on with these, so they really felt very strongly about these booklets being part of this program. One of the things that, that we've really felt that this program has done for the students is enhancement of critical thinking skills, hands-on projects, experiments, and kids really going home liking science. We're finding that they, they come to school excited about their project, excited about going to science, and if we can build that foundation at the elementary level, then we're doing something right. I would like to introduce to you Tom Marconi, who's here tonight from Optical Data, who's worked very closely with us coordinating things. If I get the wrong kid, I call up, I say, "Tom," he says, "I'll put another one in the mail." Been great to work with, and he's done staff training for all the teachers at the Walton, Franklin, to come to Montrose, you just got your programs there, right? They just got their programs, and, and Greenwood. He worked with the teachers individually to familiarize them with the Windows on Science program and technology, and he also presented to groups of us, and then really, Tom spent a couple of days at the Greenwood, anyone who wanted to come into the lab during preparation time and sit with him and learn the program, they were able to do that, and that's been really helpful. So I'm pleased that Tom could join us this evening, and would like to introduce you to Tom Marconi from Optical Data.
A couple of great introductions there. He spoke very highly of the company, and I appreciate it. It's good to hear that the teachers are using, especially the, the reading and writing component. So many times with this, this tends to present itself, and I think when we're done here, you'll see it, almost, it almost can be very glitzy at times. It is compelling, but there's much more to science, and believe me, as a former teacher and principal, I've walked in your shoes for a number of years, that science just doesn't happen on TV set, and I'm so glad Judy brought these other writings, because that's what science is. This is going to support it. This is going to support it, and this is going to be a tool to help your teachers and help your children learn science. But science is you do it. Kids want to make things, they want to break things, they want to blow up a couple of things. That's what science is all about. That's constructive, that's science, and that's what we endorse. That's why a big part of our program is hands-on. We're going to spend a quick few minutes, because we want to get our hands on this dinner that's being cooked back there. But really quickly, this, if you haven't seen or are unfamiliar with, this is a video disc, and this is what's in the machine right now, or another one of these, and they're spinning around and making this picture right here. And as Judy said, the schools are outfitted with players, I think you already had your, you'll hook up to any television set. And what we store on these are images. We can store still pictures and moving pictures on these. So we could have lots of still pictures, we could snap your pictures in here, we could put 54,000 of them on this side of the disc, so individual pictures. And we can put moving film and audio on this. In fact, our audio, there are two audio tracks of the disc, and we utilize both tracks. There's an English track for a movie clip, and there's a Spanish track for a movie clip. And I think we did that for obvious reasons. This is a national program. I'm leaving tomorrow morning and going down to New York City. I'll be working with some bilingual teachers down there who desperately certainly have the need to have materials that present themselves in Spanish. So why don't we introduce you to a lesson? I was driving down, I live in Beverly, and I was coming up the highway trying to figure out, what lesson should I do with these folks? And in the middle of this lousy weather that we typically have here, so I said, "Why don't we do something in earth science, something to do with the weather?" With the video disc, you can treat it, and most of us come from the vintage of schooling where we pretty much were dominated by books. So think about a textbook when you think about this, and you can divide the disc into those frames I talked about, pick up those as pages, and you can divide the pages to chapters. So if I want to go to a certain chapter here, I just tell it I want to go to chapter two, and I'm just going to go over to chapter two right now. And this is a unit that's going to be on weather, okay? I talk about that audio key, and I'm going to set that audio up there, I'm just clicking it with my thumb, stereo, left channel, right channel, I can shut it off. I want the left channel, because there's going to be a movie clip that I'm going to show with your students, and I want it to at least begin in English. And I'm going to change it and apply the Spanish for you, so you can get a sense of how that all works. But anyway, we're going to do a little lesson on weather here. And the title of our lesson is Air and Weather. And this would be a typical photograph, a still picture that the kids would be introduced to. Now, the still pictures don't say anything. We leave the art and craft of teaching and the hands, we think, are the best people having it, and that's the teachers in Wakefield or in any district. So we're allowing the teacher to really drive the lesson and bring the kids into it. So I'm going to bring you guys into this a little bit right now. This is a, I'll tell you a little bit about this picture. This is a photograph taken of clouds, and it was taken up Minneapolis, Minnesota, about three years ago. And it wasn't in the springtime, this was in the summertime, it was July, and it was extremely hot out and humid, as it can get even around here sometimes. And these were some big black clouds forming on the horizon down here. Let's, the kids in Wakefield made some predictions about eggs, let's make some predictions about the weather here. Based on what you see here, what do you think's going to happen later on today in this picture? Rain. And you know, kids, most kids, I've had, I've done this with kindergarten kids up here in Wakefield, and I've done it with the fourth and, well, third and fourth graders up here, and they pretty much can tell me it's going to rain, and I'll ask them, "Why? Why do you think it's going to rain? Help me out, why?" Dark cloud. Anybody know the names of those clouds? Big scientific name, big vocabulary. Science is a great subject if it weren't for the words. Sometimes they can be tough. These are cumulonimbus, cumulonimbus clouds. Good word we give the kids, you know, we tell them, "Memorize these words. There'll be a quiz on Friday, they forget them on Monday, and we go through the process again." Well, we have a, I think we have a system here that helps them to remember and build meaning into those words. Well, you think it's going to rain, cumulonimbus clouds, you know, bring with them severe rain, thunderstorms, okay? These two gentlemen work for a television station out in Minneapolis. Their job, they go up in a helicopter behind them every day, they do traffic control, just like you have out here in Boston. I come down 128 almost every morning, and I get stuck at the North Ave exit every day because of traffic. And these types of people, I need to help me to avoid certain situations on, whether it's 93 or 128. While they're doing their job, they're going to go up in a helicopter, here's the, here's the view they get looking out the helicopter. And I've asked the kids at this point, "How many have ever been in an airplane and looked out the window?" And this is kind of like what the neighborhoods look like, and this is the highway, and these are streets, et cetera. While these guys are up in the helicopter, and they, they're up there, and this thunderstorm's approaching, they literally almost fly into one of the weather and nature's most incredible phenomenon, which is a tornado. So we're tying in, the purpose, the concept we're trying to build up here is this notion of high pressure, low pressure, cold air masses, warm air masses, and we build into that later down the disc. But right now, we're going to see a little movie clip here about a tornado. Now, we haven't talked much about the technology. You've seen me pressing this thing, this is the, I always ask the kids what this is, and they give me that wonderful name that we all call it around the house, that's the clicker, you know? It is the clicker, you know, it's a remote, it's the clicker, it's good enough for me if they want to call it the clicker. This is what I, what we have to, your teachers need, this is the technological hump that they have to climb over, is this thing. If they can master this, and it's pretty simple, they're into the program. So I want to play this clip. I want to play it, which key do you think I ought to press here? Sounds good to me, so we'll play it, and we'll make this move. You'll hear some narration in a moment.
The tornado began as a long, twisting, and moving
I can change. I can do that. I can shut it off, I could carry the narration if I wanted to, if I thought it was appropriate or we're dealing with younger kids.
Usually, tornadoes last only a few minutes, but this tornado lasted almost a half hour. Listen as pilot Max Messmer speaks live with a reporter at the news desk in the TV station. The reporter asks Max several questions, but we can only hear Max's voice as he replies.
Right now, the tornado is located over a wooded area, and it is turning up black.
See, those, I can do that, I can freeze this if I want to. And these little gas jets that I have in tornadoes will do that, they'll create these internal gas jets. And if I want to, I can step one frame at a time through this, or I can back it up one frame at a time to check out, you know, whatever I want to do. I mean, I could, if I want to, I can make it go away for a minute. And you'll get their attention when you do this. They'll, they'll look right to their eyes, make your point, and bring it back anytime you want. Just a simple, a couple of keys that are pressed.
It's ripping entire fire trees into the air, thousands of feet. I don't know if it has damaged any houses, I won't be able to find out until later on.
Are there lesson plans that come with the program?
Very stationary.
I'm going to talk over them. There are lesson plans that come with the program, so that everything they're saying is written down for the classroom teacher. There are lessons, there are detailed descriptions, there'll be slides. In essence, the story was the, the, the lesson is a story, and it was designed with elementary teachers in mind. It was designed with the fact that most elementary teachers, like, that was my background, had to teach science, didn't have a strong background in science, so we provide a very comforting level of lesson plan for the teacher to help them deliver lessons, lessons like this here. Bring this, bring that audio back for me.
And the winds are very crusty, but not excessive. I would say 30, 40 knots at the most.
One of the activities that the kids do with this, the hands-on, the kids construct a pet tornado. We use, the fact, I've got the recipe here, and I'm going to give you all, you can go home and make one with your kids. You make a tornado in a jar.
Looks like right now, we have another touchdown in.
Now, this clip is going to last about three minutes, and we tell you that in lesson plans, so you can plan your pacing when you deliver this lesson to your, to your kids.
Photographer Tom Empe zooms in for a closer look as the twister reforms over this field. Notice how it acts as a giant vacuum cleaner, picking up everything in reach.
There's a tree coming up the ground here.
Tornadoes are extremely unpredictable.
Remember, the questions the kids are starting to form in their minds now.
The tornado used to have a little populated area. No one was hurt.
Can it happen here?
Only a few trucks were knocked down.
Why is this particular one white?
The tornado also peeled up a section of this roof, just as if it were made of aluminum foil.
It's going to stop here. We build in these picture stops on the disc, so the teachers don't have to worry about when to stop it, it stops itself. And the lesson goes on, we talk about, you know, conditions of weather, and we know that rain, you can look out the window and see a picture like this, rain is a condition of weather. What else?
Snow.
Ah, it happens to be next. You get the kids to predict, they'll, they'll help you out, they'll carry you right through these things, snow and clouds, et cetera. Now, one last thing, because I know, I'm getting, I'm starving. We're going to, I'm going to show you vocabulary with this. First word, the clouds, what kind of clouds are those again? See what a class we've got here, you know? This is the top group here in Wakefield. I'm going to show you where that word is. What I do is I dial an address, I dial a frame number. So I'll tell you where we are, we're on frame page 7,245. I'm going to turn to page 15,120. This is like having a 54,000-page book, well, 108,000 if I wanted both sides of it, okay? So I'm going to turn to this page right here, right now, and show you that word, cumulonimbus. It's a word, we just went to page 15,120. We take the word, we put it on a board for you, and when I taught, I used to have the kids either write it down or look it up, or I gave them the definition or whatever. And what we do, and I think it's a good technique for teachers, there's the word, you use your remote control, we step forward, that's what cumulonimbus is. We build, we go from something that's abstract to kids, to something that's concrete. Okay, now I see it, I can build a mental image in my head of what you're talking about. There's a definition, there's an example, and if it's appropriate, here it is in Spanish. There's a lot more to whip, but I know the dinner's dying to be served. I've got a handout for everyone to take home, it really explains the program. I'm going to be here, be happy to answer questions and show you some of the other things we have on here. It's a simple technology, but there's some elegance tied into it. And it's nice to hear that the kids are responding to it. Your teachers that I've trained have been very professional and responded very well to the training. It's been fun coming up here and working with them. Plus, I have four nieces and nephews in the Wakefield schools, so that helps still. Thank you all very much.
Just allow me to close the program by thanking Tom for coming. I met Tom some, some time ago, he's a, he's, he's an expert in the area of reading, and I've met him at the International Reading Association for many years before he went into this new line of endeavor. This is a very exciting learning experience for children. If, children are no, are not viewed as absorbers of the teacher's knowledge, to sit and listen and try to learn, but rather to use all of their senses in approaching many subjects. This is the area of science. We now are looking, seeing we've already bought the equipment, we are now are looking at using the equipment in the areas of reading, language, and mathematics. So it's a, it's quite an investment for our total elementary reading program, and I, I can assure you that all of Wakefield's elementary schools next year will have the technology and the training, the staff training that's necessary to carry this out. So thank you very much for your attention. If you have any questions at all, all of the principals are here to react, as well as Tom. Thank you. Enjoy your meal.